Welcome to the School Board Candidates Forum sponsored by the River Falls Branch of AAUW and the River Falls Optimists Club. This forum is being broadcast live by the River Falls Community Television Channel 16. It will also be available via video streaming at www.rfcity.org/rftv. I am Rita Kozak, your moderator. I would like to introduce Ruth Lee for an opening welcome from AAUW.
Thank you Rita, and thank you for being our moderator for this event. We would like to welcome everyone that is here, especially our candidates, and we thank you for taking time to do this. AAUW is an organization that has existed since 1881, and that's when it had its kind of its foundations. And the River Falls Branch has been in existence for eighty five, or excuse me, eighty years, starting in 1935. The American Association of University Women advances equity for women and girls through advocacy, education, philanthropy, and research. There is material out in the hallway if anybody is interested in checking out more information about our organization. And more women and men, we let you guys in now too, are welcome to join us if you are interested. Thank you for being here.
I'd like to introduce Mary Bednorowski representing the Optimists Club.
Thank you Rita. The Optimists Club is dedicated to bringing out the best in kids. Each club is autonomous and run by members of the community, so the River Falls Area Optimists have the unique flexibility to serve the youth of our area through community service programs of our choice. Club meetings are the second Monday of the month at 6:30 and quarterly the fourth Thursday at noon. And you can even get your pizza because the meetings are at Pizza Hut in River Falls. Some of our fundraisers have included the Avenue of Flags subscriptions where a flag is placed in your front lawn seven times a year for $35. And this is our second year that the Boy Scouts are helping us with placements, so that's a direct link to the youth in River Falls. The sale of our River Falls Oply games which are on sale at several businesses around town like Freeman Drugs, H&amp;F Furnishings, RCU, First National Bank, and the River Falls Mercantile, and a few others. And parents should be advised that there is a short version included in the directions of this game. We also sponsor a beanbag tournament in the summer and are planning to have a pickleball tournament this coming fall. We've donated money to such organizations as the schools, the food pantry, Turning Point, Habitat for Humanity, the baseball field, and the step program, to name but a few. We're always looking for new members, so consider that too. You can find us on our Facebook page by looking for River Falls Area Optimists Club, and we also have information on the table outside the door. Our club appreciates the opportunity to sponsor this forum today, and we wish the candidates the best of luck. As a former school employee, I know how important their job is to make school a place for success and achievement for students and to foster a place where the employees can do their best work in using their talents to help children. Thank you very much.
I would like to begin by asking everyone to turn off their cellphones so that we don't have any distractions, or destruction during the answers here. There are three seats on the River Falls School District Board. Five individuals have filed for election to the board. They are the incumbents Barbara Colpeen, Michael Miller, and Alan Tuckton-Hagan. There are two additional candidates seeking election, Michael Stifter and Karen Swenson. Ms. Swenson is not present tonight as she is out of the area on business and thus is not available. Volunteers are circulating among the audience to take your written questions. Please address your questions to all candidates. We'll begin with the opening statements. It's a two-minute opening statement from each of the candidates in the order in which they were drawn. The result of the drawing will be beginning with Ms. Colpeen and ending with Mr. Stifter. So, starting with candidate one, Barbara Colpeen, please tell us about your qualifications and why you are seeking election to the River Falls School District Board. That's a two-minute statement. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks everybody for coming tonight. I'd like to start out by saying last fall I attended a meeting where the Director of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards declared, "If you're not an optimist, get out of education." Well, I'm here to tell you that I am an optimist. I believe in the abilities of our children and what they can accomplish. I truly believe in the Wisconsin system of public education where, because of taxpayer commitment, every child, no matter who their parents are or what part of the state they're from, they're given the opportunity to achieve whatever they dream. I believe that good school districts are governed by people who are all deeply committed to the organization's purpose. I understand though, that these people come to their leadership roles with extremely varied personal backgrounds, goals, and expectations. I respect and I value different perspectives and even disagreements on school boards. It's been said that if all seven people always agree, six people are overpaid and unnecessary. I know that as a school board member, I'm elected to be the hands-on, the prepared, the knowledgeable, and the ethical representative of the district voters. I take that responsibility very seriously. I realize that the decisions that the board makes today will influence both the support for and the course of education in our district for years to come. Over my entire professional life and the past thirty years of advocating for educational issues in this town, I've repeatedly demonstrated that I'm interested in solving problems, not in taking sides. You know, I realize that I can't fix the gridlock in Washington, I can't control or manage the entire state legislature, or even a legislator, but I can and I do make a positive difference for both our taxpayers and our students through my work as a school board member. I love representing my neighbors and I'm truly grateful for the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Tuckton-Hagan.
Thank you Rita. I want to thank the AAUW and the Optimists Club for providing this forum tonight. Helping the community understand the issues that we face and the complexity of the kinds of things we do is really important for us, and this is a good venue for us. Not only tonight for the folks who turned out on this beautiful evening, but also those who are able to watch it on the website, live, on cable, and those kinds of things. It's important because what we do isn't always as easy as it may seem. Many of you know me, my name is Alan Tuckton-Hagan. I've lived in the district for a number of years. I have three sons who have all been part of the River Falls School District, John, Daniel, and William. William is here tonight, I'll point him out, he's in the red t-shirt back there. And he's an eighth grader at Meyer Middle School. I've had a connection with the school district for a long time. But I would also say that I'm not a parent, I'm not a person who sits on the board simply because my kids are in school and I've got an axe to grind about any particular issue. I'm well aware of the fact that a school board member, the seven of us, are elected at large. We're elected to represent all of the citizens in the district, and that's not just the families who have kids in school. That includes retired folks, that includes empty nesters, that includes students, that includes everybody in this district. And a good school, good schools and strong public schools are important to us. It's a privilege to serve on this board and especially in the school district. We are, I think most of you know, we're one of the highest performing school districts in the state academically. We are one of the most sound fiscally in the state, and I think it's important for us to stay there and keep that. Our role as board members is to make sure the school district is well-run, not to micromanage the school. And we do that by hiring good administrators and good teachers. My three primary issues are remaining fiscally sound as a district, teacher compensation, and adequately compensating our teachers and staff, and a resolution to the Academy Building and working with our Montessori Elementary to have adequate facilities for them.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I would also like to thank the AAUW and the Optimists Club for inviting us here tonight. I guess one of the things I'd like to say about myself and what I bring to the school board is, I'm a born and raised River Fallsite. I've spent thirty-seven out of my forty-seven years here in River Falls. I like to tell people I spent the first eighteen years trying to figure out how to get out of here, and the next ten figuring out how to get back. And I was successful in doing that. My wife and I moved back in 1996. We have three kids. We came back to River Falls, one of the main reasons we started to have children is then we wanted to have them go through the school district here. My daughter was a graduate in 2013, and I have two kids in school now. One is a junior and one is an eighth grader. Another unique perspective I have on being a board member is I have a wife who is also a teacher in a neighboring district. I hear every day the great things that are happening in our schools. I also hear about some of the challenges faced by our staff, by our parents, by our teachers. So, I get that every day from my wife and understand some of the unique perspective that the teachers have. I'm a business owner in town, I'm a commercial property owner. I've been a long-term volunteer coach at the high school in the football program and the hockey program this past year. I've spent six years on the school board. As part of the school board, I'm also active in the Business Affairs Committee. I was co-chaired the Academy Building Committee and trying to come up with a solution, trying hard to come up to a solution for that building. So, those are some of the unique perspectives I have on the position of school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter.
Good evening. I also would like to thank AAUW and the River Falls Optimists Club for hosting tonight's forum. My name is Michael Stifter. My wife Tammy and I moved to River Falls in 1999 when I started my employment at UW River Falls. I have two teenage daughters, Emily and Nan, who are both in the school district, both at the River Falls High School, and both are products of our public Montessori and Meyer Middle School. I have a bachelor's degree in secondary education, social studies, and a master's degree in higher education administration. And basically, my career and training has all been in public education. I currently serve as the Executive Director for Facilities Planning and Management at UW River Falls, and I have oversight responsibility for campus planning, facilities management, police and parking, and sustainability. I've been involved in a number of community, city, and school district activities. I've been an active sixteen-year member of the River Falls Alliance Club, participated in the Second Class of Leadership River Falls, and followed that with several years on the Utility Commission, and I was an inaugural member of Powerful Choices. In regards to the school district, I participated in the strategic planning process and was involved in the current. I co-chaired one and was a committee member of the last two referendum efforts. I was an inaugural member of the Ford Foundation and most recently was on the Academy Building Committee. I'm active in our church and I serve as a church trustee. And I feel I possess the experience and skills to be a strong contributor to the board. I have professional experience on campus which includes planning, facilities, and budgeting, which also provides me a strong skill base which should transfer well to a role on the school board. I'm fortunate to have a strong working relationship with the school district, and I look forward to this opportunity.
Thank you. We're going to start our questions now. These are questions that have been generated from the audience, and candidates are allowed one minute to answer each question, and there will be no rebuttal. So, we'll begin with our question. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan, you'll be answering this first. What would be your top three priorities for the school district if the district was not bound by revenue limits?
Three, and that fits well with the three I just ticked off. I think first and foremost is, well, to remain fiscally sound, I think is really important for us. A resolution to our facilities issues and our buildings, our Montessori Elementary Recreation Space in our district, and addressing that Academy Building generally is an important one. But my first and foremost priority would be adequately addressing compensation for teachers. I think since Act 10 and the state budget and the fact that the state is still struggling to make its economy strong has really limited our ability to adequately compensate our teachers and do some of the things we need with our facilities and our curriculum. So, I think teacher compensation, the Academy Building, and as part of that certainly the Montessori Elementary.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Excuse me. I also would say keeping a strong staff. We're in a unique position here on this side of the state. We're right on the border with Minnesota. They live by different rules over there. Keeping our top professionals, our top staff here, and not having them lured away to the other side of the river is a very important piece for me, facilities, and coming up with a solution to the Academy Building and coming up with a long-term solution for the Montessori Program. We've got the Renaissance, I think, taken care of for the next ten to twenty years. We need to figure out the Montessori Program and the long-term solution for them. The other thing I think we need to do is we need to make sure we're doing what we can to manage the mandates that are being placed on our schools. We have a lot of things coming down from Madison and a lot of things coming down from Washington DC. We, as a district, need to pick and choose the things that we can manage, so we make sure we're not overwhelming our staff with all the mandates that are being put on them at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter.
Very similar. The three I had kind of written down and thinking about were compensation, facilities, and programs for our children. Compensation for many of the reasons mentioned, to stay competitive with our neighbors to the west. I think compensation is a very important aspect, and it's a complex one. Facilities and technology, the infrastructure in particular, as I've learned in getting around to the schools, no one's expecting a Taj Mahal. You know, we have good facilities, but maintaining them is important. And then programs, and that's probably the most important thing. And it's part of why I emphasize kind of a common sense, integrated planning approach, of balancing those with the available resources we have.
Thank you. Ms. Colpeen.
Okay. My top three would be finance and funding. As people have said before, at the state level, we need to develop a consistent funding plan that, so that school boards can actually manage their districts. When you don't know how much money you're getting every year, it's very difficult to manage the budget, the people, the morale, and the educational programs. Second thing would be to ensure that we provide a great education to all our students, not just the basic skills, not just technology, but a well-rounded curriculum that includes art, music, history, science, geography, literature, going on. You know, we already have good and effective teachers, but we need to work to keep them here. And we need to figure out how to not lose our brains, our teachers, over to Minnesota. And I think the third thing would be internally in the district, coming up with a, constantly working on and coming up with a good, consistent balance between our operational budget and our instructional budget. Because the salaries and benefits that we're paying our teachers are not commensurate with their worth to the district, but we're constrained by the state right now. So, I guess the question is if there were no constraints. So, you know, however much money we have and that our taxpayers are willing to support, to get a balance between the education and the instructional budget and the operational budget, the buildings.
Thank you. Great. Mr. Miller, please outline how you think the school board should determine its priorities.
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is listen to our public and hear what our taxpayers have to say. We just went through a process where we're going through a new strategic plan, and there were some things identified during that process that's going to give us our roadmap to what we need to do as far as priority. Things like retaining the respect in our best staff, accommodating marginalized students, diverse curriculum, continuing with character education, those kinds of things come from the community, and we need to be listeners. We're the conduit between the community and the school district, and so we need to listen to our community members. We also need to listen to our staff, and that's what our role is.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter.
Similarly, and I found, just in preparing really for this role and making a decision on whether this was something I wanted to invest my time in, it was getting around to, you know, the schools, talking to the administrators, teachers, and staff, staff at all levels, staff at the district office, town board, PTOs, psych councils. All of those were important and similar to what Mike had said, you know, listening to our base. Part of why, again, you know, getting to town board meetings, you know, I think often we focus on the city of River Falls, forgetting there's a larger set of towns around us and have strong feelings on the district. And being involved in the community, you know, something I strive to be, and getting involved in a variety of ways are all real key.
Thank you. Ms. Colpeen.
I think all of the above are important, and one thing that I would do first or in parallel with the strategic planning is to actually survey the voters of the district, the taxpayers, survey the staff, you know, come up with a statistically valid survey that we talk to the people who pay the taxes, and what do they see? And one thing that I would like to do also is to use the model that other school districts have begun around the state and bring more input in from our industrial parks, from the local businesses, both here and in Hudson, you know, where our graduates go, like what kind of graduate do they need, and what skills do they need for to run their businesses? And make them more of our partners, that they're just not receiving what we turn out, but they can help us produce and help support us even more financially and with technology to do what we, what they want us to do.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan.
We link our priorities to our strategic planning process, and we actually, interestingly enough, are one of the few districts in the state that have a comprehensive strategic planning process that's been in place for five years, and we're just in the process of renewing that for the next five years. It's based on broad community support, broad community input, and a broad community involvement in its monitoring so that we know when things happen to us, we have opportunities or we have areas of concern, like when Act 10 was passed, or the current budget where we're being faced with maybe some more cutbacks. We can go to our strategic plan and say, what have our priorities all been about? That makes it less serendipitous, that makes it more community-based and way we can make our decisions. Because why haven't we invested more in teacher compensation? Why haven't we been able to solve the Renaissance building, or the Academy Building, kinds of things? It's because we don't have the money. But in the process of the last five years, we've still been able to maintain a balanced budget, we maintain an excellent bond rating, and that has helped us. Our priorities linked to our strategic plan.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter, in your judgment, what have been some of the most significant accomplishments of the current strategic plan River Falls leads?
Oh, great question. And I will say, I think there have been a number of them. This comes, you know, just from my own personal opinion, but was kind of reiterated at the summit here of a few Saturdays ago. Things that really stand out, community education, character education, the one-to-one initiative, the languages expansion, again, really the development back into the elementary schools, all were kind of hallmarks, I think everyone almost in attendance agreed to, and I would say would agree to if you talked to them on the street in that regard. And really, what I was most impressed by, and again, I do a lot of strategic planning on the campus, master planning and things, was that this was a living, breathing document. This wasn't something that just was done, took a lot of effort, and then sat on a shelf and collected dust for five years. As Alan says, it drives the priorities, and I have a lot of hope for the next one. And I think a less is more approach with this next one is an opportunity, whereas the first one was more of a catch-all. But really, those four things, I think, particularly stand out.
Thank you. Ms. Colpeen.
I think the things that I'm proud of that we've accomplished is that after the first strategic plan was initiated, we've worked on aligning the curriculum so that it flows. Every student is expected to know, you know, it flows upwards to the next level, so alignment of the curriculum. Our focus on personalized learning, which gets to the one-on-one initiative, and use of technology in the classrooms and at home. Our focus on increased rigor and preparing our students for either post-secondary education of some sort or a job. I think our comprehensive community education and volunteer program have all been good things, as well as trying to increase world languages all the way through the grades. We're expanding in a responsible way.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan.
Our strategic plan, I think first and foremost, what's one of the greatest things of our strategic plan, planning process, is the fact that we did it. And we took that on. And thinking back, we all, I've been involved in it, we all kind of take it for granted right now, but I remember five or six years ago when not everybody was so supportive of going into this, because it's very involved and it's very complex and seems to be very time-consuming, but in the end, it was a good document. So, having a broad-based community support in the strategic planning process itself really helps this community to hold it together and be focused on our schools and helps the board. I think certainly the one-to-one and technology initiatives, community education, and the fact that we're one of the few school districts in this state that has a community education program which serves more than just the families with kids and the kids in the district, but serves everybody in this district, has been important. And the construction associated with our referendums, which came out of the strategic plan, and the fact that we got a lot of bang for our buck out of the money that we got out of those referendums, and that construction costs were lower, because we have such a strong bond rating, the cost of our money was lower, we got a lot out of that construction. That was a huge accomplishment for us.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Well, it's hard to be the last one to go because they've already chosen a lot of things, I would say. Some of the things I would mention is the 4K program that we put into place. That has been a big winner for a lot of families that maybe couldn't afford preschool in the past. It also has helped us with our revenue, with our enrollment facilities. That was a big win for us to have that referendum pass, and I don't think it would have passed unless we would have had it as part of our strategic plan and had real buy-in from the community from the start. Character education, it's living and breathing in our schools. We have, every one of our schools has examples of what they're doing to teach our children, not just math and reading and so on. It's also how to care for your fellow students, how to care for your fellow people. Personalized learning, the one-to-one initiative, as Alan mentioned, the online school that we just put in place within the last year. Community education, more people are coming through our doors every day in this building that have nothing to do with the kids in the school. It's people coming into our community and into our schools and having a good time.
Thank you. Ms. Colpeen, if there are budget cuts in the future, what would you specifically cut in the district's budget?
Nothing. Oh yeah, you're happy I get to go first on that one. That's very difficult because we have cut, there isn't fluff in the budget. And so, you're starting to cut the meat out of the program, programs, because over the last ten or fifteen years, we've cut a lot in the district. And so, there's nothing that really comes to mind. It would be painful, it would, we would have to cut some of our programs, we would have to possibly cut some of our staff and go to larger class sizes. You can see me grimacing because it goes counter to everything that we've tried to maintain and keep in this school district. They would be painful cuts, they would be cuts that would detract from why we're here and from the success that we've seen in the past. So, it's difficult. It would have to be programs which would be, come down to staff.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan.
It's a tough one, but I would say first and foremost, we want to know, are these permanent cuts or are these going to be temporary cuts? Others can we weather them for a year? And as we monitor them, our first thing I think we would want to go to and think about is, is this something that for a year, we can put some things on hold? Can we put on hold some maintenance projects? Can we put on hold a few other projects? Can we maybe look at holding a couple of positions open for a little bit longer and get us through another year, fourteen, sixteen months? That gives us time to really put together a more serious plan rather than just start cutting. One of the things that I would protect first and foremost, and I've said this all along, ever since Act 10 and all we've faced, is protect positions as much as we can. And we aren't going to lay off people so that we can give more pay raises, larger pay raises or those kinds of things. We have been really good at protecting positions in this. And just in talking to my colleagues around the UW system who are getting layoff notices right now, left and right, because of what's going on there, we've been able to protect positions here. That would be one of my priorities, to protect positions. Secondly, would be to try and see if we can transition for a year to a year and a half and figure out how serious and permanent are these cuts going to be.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Well, yeah, hot potato one right there because it is hard. One of the things we do as a board is, we look for guidance from our administrators and our staff. Generally, they come to us with recommendations and we survey them and make decisions from there. So, I guess I would look to our administrators to what they think can be cut without having to cut more into the bone, because as Barb and Alan have said, you know, we run a pretty tight ship. We've got a very financially viable district here. One of the things we need to focus on is how do we not have budget cuts by growing enrollment? How do we become the district of choice for people moving into the community? How do we have great schools? So, when someone is moving to this area, they choose us over Hudson, Prescott, Ellsworth, New Richmond, those types of things. So, I guess I can't give you a specific, again, like Alan said, you need to know, you know, can you put off things for a year? Can you, the maintenance is a hot item because we just went through updating the maintenance on a lot of our buildings to now let them go into fault. I don't know that that's the answer. Putting off a school bus purchase for a year, those kinds of things. But certainly, if it's a long-term cut, you know, we would have to look at everything.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter.
Maybe here's the advantage of being the fourth one to answer this question. Similar-
Similar in a lot of ways. And, you know, working at UW right now, I'm facing half a million-dollar cut just within our department as an example. So I'm very sensitive to this. It's part of why I think I emphasize the common sense integrated planning approach. You know, programs drive facilities and you work within the available resources. And no doubt, I think, realistically, you know, it would result in foregoing aspects of that. You know, hopefully on the staffing side, you do it through attrition versus, again, the, the actual layoff elimination of people. The facilities, the ability to forego certain investments, but it is a, a difficult kind of thing. But I think the real key is in something Alan alluded to, is it short-term or permanent nature? You know, because again, I will give the three to, to, the three to my right a great deal of credit, as well as other school board members in the audience and former administrators. They've done a great job of managing this district. And we can buffer most short-term, but it is increasingly challenging. So.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan, what are the biggest challenges faced by the students in our school district? If elected, how would you address these challenges?
I think one of the biggest challenges our students face right now is how rapidly the world is changing, just the, the amount of information that's available to them right now and trying to figure out how to process that, how to learn, how to learn to learn. So we've begun to, to implement our one-to-one initiatives and we're very proud of the fact that we've been very good at being able to expand the number of devices that our students can use. And more importantly, the fact that our teachers have really stepped up to the plate to learn the new technology and how to teach. So I think one of the challenges is how to learn in this kind of environment and process information. The other is just how complicated the world is right now. And as Mike mentioned, the character education program in our school district right now is very important. And I think it's an important part. We don't often hear about it the way we should, but it's a, very much a part of our, our curriculum here and those kinds of things. So I think that as our students face this, they face a more complicated world, they face a more uncertain world economically right now. But this biggest challenge we can deal with is this notion of helping them learn to learn and especially using technology to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
I would agree. I think the technology has changed the way we learn. Going to school is different than when we went to school. Kids aren't getting math books anymore. Kids are getting devices. Kids aren't talking on the phone in the, in the basement, having their dad get on the phone and, hey, get off the phone. They're using the texting. They're, the world is different than it was and we need to help them keep up. And we need to keep up with technology and education. It's a challenging time for kids. There's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things out there for them to do. A lot of things that could lead them down the wrong path. The character ed program we have, the mentor program we have, the cat, or the cats program at the high school is part of our character education where we match up kids, regular ed kids with a special needs kid, and they work together. And those are the kinds of things that we're doing to help our students navigate the difficult challenges that they face.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter.
I'm kind of reminded with her, with my minister sitting in the audience, that our children tend to be more stressed these days than, than ever before. I think technology in some ways, while it's a tool, it also probably leads to some of that stress. It's a very fast-paced world. And they seem to be ever more stressed and more pressured, I think, the, the amount of assessment we have in the schools. And again, a lot of that's put upon us. I'm not suggesting we choose that, but it would be something I'd probably be somewhat mindful of because it does seem like our children and teachers spend an inordinate amount of time assessing and testing our children versus just allowing them to, to go through the, the instruction side of it. So there'd be a couple of aspects.
Thank you. Ms. Copine.
Biggest challenge our students face and how do we prepare them for it? I would say having the need to be able to learn many different ways. And we need to teach them how to do that, both from a textbook, but from other people, from doing computer searches, library searches. You know, how do you learn? You, you can travel virtually, you know, all over the world, actually go different places. I think we need to teach them resiliency. So, because they're not going to know what careers they're going to be in 10 years from now. And so we need them to teach them resiliency that, you know, their, their path should always try to be forward, but it's not always going to be easy and it's not always going to be laid out and it's not going to be the one that somebody did 10 years ago, your older brother or sister, your parents. Those jobs haven't been created yet. And I think they need to be aware that, of global competition, both for jobs and for even their positions at universities or, you know, at schools. So it's no longer just somebody from the other school district or your conference. It's all over the world.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, do you envision going to referendum within the next three to five years? If so, what items do you see on the ballot? For example, our elementary schools are at near capacity.
Well, I think enrollment will drive if we go to referendum. I think three to five years is probably a little bit early. I would say probably more like five to 10 years. We need to come up with a solution, as I mentioned earlier, with our Montessori program and that facility. Hopefully we can come up with a solution that does not need to go to referendum. So no, I don't see us going to referendum in the next three to five years.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter.
That's a great question. And again, as I mentioned, having had involvement with the past two referendums, have a bit of a perspective on it. And I do think it, it could be possible within three to five years. But again, what I've found with the district and with the school board is we're not going to take it lightly. You know, if we go, it's going to go with a good plan, the strategic plan. I think, you know, we'll be a couple of years into it. I think this next year and the formulation of it should guide us a bit. I have no doubt we will look at our finances. Is it a good time? I think with the bonding with the high school, I'm likely coming off somewhere in that timeframe, it might position us particularly well, where it's not a major burden, if any burden, on the taxpayers. So I have no doubt it won't be something we'll take lightly. We'll be strategic and it'll be broad-based. I don't see it being a single issue. I don't see it being around one, one elementary or just the elementaries. It'll likely focus on a number of different things.
Thank you. Ms. Copine.
I see the real possibility of going to referendum within the next five years. And for the reasons that Mike Stifter was talking about, that yes, we will have bonds at the high school paid off. So the tax burden, you know, if we, if we planned it correctly, the tax burden for the taxpayers would not increase or possibly would not increase or might even go down depending on what our needs were. And if we go to referendum, I believe and hope that we can have broad-based input from the whole community and possibly look at some public-public partnerships to, to meet our needs. It doesn't have to be just us building something. It could be in conjunction, maybe with the university, maybe with senior citizens. You know, if we can look at those kinds of, of options also so that we have broad-based support for what the needs are of the community. I want to look at the whole community, not just the school district and the, the students.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan.
If we go to referendum in the next two, five, 10, or 20 years, I can tell you there will be opposition to it. There always is opposition to a referendum. So I don't want to be afraid of going to a referendum because there might be opposition. We need to be prepared to step up to the plate and talk about it. And for those of you who were engaged in the last two referendum processes, you know that a number of us were willing to go to every one of those meetings and answer questions and talk about it. As Mike mentioned, we would not bring a referendum proposal forward lightly. This shouldn't be driven by how many years we should do, between referenda, it should be driven by what are the needs of the district? What protects the district? What protects our property values as a district? We don't want to be seen as a cheap district with poor-performing schools and bad facilities. We want to be seen as a good district. We have six significant issues related to, as I've mentioned earlier, our Montessori elementary, recreation facilities and multipurpose rooms, ongoing maintenance issues, and certainly our elementary expansion. Our elementary schools are at near capacity or at capacity. We need to monitor that and not do this on the cheap, but watch. So it could be sooner than five years. It might be five years or later. We'll put forward, forward a proposal when we really feel we have community support and a strong proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter, how do you prioritize the need for the public Montessori to be elevated as a school out of the current deficit model the school is in as compared to the other elementary schools in our district?
Oh, that's a, that's a great question. And, you know, having been a Montessori parent, you know, both my daughters went through, you know, Montessori programs near and dear to my heart. But I would say it's not the, the only reason I'm running. I'm not running as a, as a one, one-issue candidate by any means, nor the, the three to my right. You know, if I had a concern at times this year is that the board almost got too focused on just the Montessori issue in that regard. And, and I'll, I'll clarify that a bit. As I was meeting with both the site council recently and the administrators at the Renaissance, or at, excuse me, the Montessori, what was interesting was the board really, I think, was focused so much on what the parents and what the teachers, staff had needed or wanted. It was more of what does the district want? What does it need the Montessori elementary program to be? And that's a really good question. It was kind of an interesting way to have spun that and it really resonated with me. And I guess that's a bit of the approach I probably would take on the board. Is it really, what is it, you know, from a board's perspective that we want of the Montessori program in terms of enrollment? I think it's inevitable for a while we'll be at, at the current building. Referendum may address that. We'll see in time. But right now, I think, short-term, we're going to have an investment to be made there.
Thank you. Ms. Copine.
The, the question was to raise the Montessori from the deficit model that it's in now.
I'll, I'll reread the question.
Okay.
How do you prioritize the need for the public Montessori to be elevated as a school out of the current deficit model the school is in as compared to the other elementary schools in our district?
Well, I think by nature of the term, the deficit model, or the fact that the Montessori does not have as good a facilities as the other elementaries. When it is a true elementary school in the district that has an enrollment of about 180 students, we need to spend the necessary time and money to, to make it an equitable elementary school. And I think there are things that we can't do because of the, the site and the, the money that we have. But I think in the short-term, what we can do is improve the security of the, the building. Since we've made the, are making the decision not to totally close the older parts of the building, Montessori will continue to use the parts of the 1920s building that they have used. So I think that really helps. Sorry, I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan.
These are really great questions. I wish you guys would show up at our board meetings and ask us these kinds of questions because this is a good exercise for us to sort of think through this and for you to hear what we're saying. Are this, this district has chosen the fact that we think choice is important within our district. And we have a number of choices. As Mike mentioned, we have a new e-school within the district that can help students with online learning. We have our Renaissance Academy, which is one of the few alternative learning centers for high school students in this part of the state. It's very successful. We have a very successful Montessori program. All of these things provide choices within our district that most districts don't provide for their students. So it's important for us as a district, since we've decided to go there, to continue to support these. The Montessori elementary is, is a genuine elementary. It's one, it's smaller by quite a bit than our others, but it's growing enrollment and it's important. If we're going to embrace Montessori, we have to embrace some of the things that go around it. So one of the things we need to do going forward is begin to separate the conversation about Montessori from the building that they're in. We've tended to, to link the two of them consistently over time. We can't seem to talk about Montessori without talking about that building. And I don't know that there's a separate solution to those, but we don't always talk about just Montessori alone. So choice, enrollment, where the budget goes and, and enrollment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
You know, as a business owner, one of the things I'm always looking at is, is how can we have a competitive edge over our competitors? And one of the things I think the Montessori program brings to our district is a competitive edge over our neighbors. There's not many Montessori programs in this area. I think it brings a competitive edge. I think it draws people to our community. I think it draws open enrollment to our community. One of the things we recently did was we added the 4K program there, and that has helped the enrollment at that school. But we need to come up with a long-term facility. I don't know what the answer is. I sure would like to see something on its current site. I don't know what that would look like there. But that has been the site of education since the 1850s. And I just think it's kind of a unique site to continue with the Montessori program. But I don't know if that's feasible or not. At some point, do we need to look at, like we did with one of our referendums, adding on to one of our elementary schools? I'm not sure what the answer is. But I know one thing is the board is very committed to the program and will come up with a solution one way or another.
Thank you. Ms. Copine, what is the most important role of school board members?
The most important role of a school board member? I think the most important thing a school board member can do is listen. And listen to people who have opinions different than your own to help them inform your decision. And then, as an individual member, you always have six other people that you can interact with or that you need to interact with, and you make decisions collectively. And then once the decision is made, then you move forward and on to the, the next decision that is made. So I think listening and working together and listening to all constituencies in the, in the district. There's the staff, there's the student. It's, I think the hardest thing and the most important thing is to balance the needs from the, between the taxpayers, the students, the community values, and the staff.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan.
You know, I think that some of the most important roles for school board members is first off to represent, to remember that we represent the entire district, that strong public schools benefit the entire district and, and benefit all of us. If we have good schools, it affects everything from the quality of our workforce, to the crime rate, to the value of our properties. We aren't an average community. We shouldn't have average schools. We're above-average community. We should have above-average schools. So I think all of that is important. It's important for us to advocate for public education. And I think public education is, is getting some bum wraps in this state right now. And it's important for us to stand up. Public education is what built this country. It's what built this state to be one of the most well-educated states in the nation and a strong economy in the last century. And advocating for strong public schools is really important for us. And ultimately, and Barb alluded to this, to functioning as a board, our job is to come forward and do the people's work, not to come forward with one issues, not to come forward with and constantly have divided votes and conflict on the board. It's important for us to represent our constituent, the constituents in the district and to come together and talk through until we can come together with solutions.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
One of the, one of the things that we are advocates for our taxpayers and our community, like I said, we're the conduit between the, the community and the school district. We set the policy and the governance for the district. We're not the day-to-day managers of the business of, of the district. We're not there to manage the day-to-day operations. We're there to set the policy and the governance. We identify and implement the priorities that have been given to us by our taxpayers and our community. We support the strategic plan. And, you know, one of the big things that we went through since I've been on the board is hiring a superintendent. The superintendent sets the, the, the leadership model for the district. And one of the biggest roles we have when it's time is to hire a good, strong communicator, good, strong leader for our, for our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter.
You know, a word that I've, I've come to, to like over the years, working in public education, something all three of these spoke to also, but it's being a steward for the citizenry. You know, it's a, it's an important role. It's not one to take too serious. There's that balancing line, but being a good steward, listening to our constituents, working in their best interest, not your own selfish ones, listening, being involved, the finances, the facilities aspect of it. You know, steward, stewardship is what really comes to mind for me if I were to put it in one word. And I think for myself, probably something that, words of advice that various folks talked, talked to me about as I made my way around was making sure and remind, remembering to separate the parent and board member role. Having two daughters in the district that I cared deeply about, it's, it's, it's maybe that, that caution too. So that's something for myself on a personal note that I plan to try to keep in check.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan, how can the Forward Education Foundation be promoted in the community?
Forward Education Foundation, we are really fortunate as a community to have that foundation and, and to have the resources and the energy that's been behind that. It's been important for us as a district not to just assume that we've got a foundation now that's a conduit for outside money to backfill budget issues. We've really tried hard to make sure as a district, we maintain a strong district and that the Forward Foundation does enhancements. So it's helped us with all kinds of initiatives. I, I like the fact that it's been able to provide some innovation and initiative incentives for our teachers to try new things, to try new equipment, to try new approaches, to, to experiment with some things, and actually to help us as a district pilot some things. Forward Foundation really helped us pilot an awful lot of how we're Forward Foundation really helped us pilot an awful lot of how we're implementing technology right now in the district, and professional development, and those kinds of things. It is another avenue for our teachers to look for support for some of the really creative and innovative activities that they want to do.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Well, the, the foundation, I think, was established based off of our last strategic planning process, and one of the things that I think they could do is engage the alumni of our high school and of our school district. The, the Facebook, there's a new Facebook page, River Falls High School Alumni Page, that I think would be a strong tool in that. They recently just sent out a note saying, hey, we want to know what year you graduated, and where do you live? They wanted to kind of plot where the alumni are. They got over 2,000 responses from RFHS alumni, and every week, there's notes on there about, with pictures from past yearbooks and, and those kinds of things, and it really engages the alumni. I think that would be a really neat tool to use, the foundation to use, potentially to identify the alumni out there.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter?
You know, as I mentioned in my opening statement, I was fortunate to have been an inaugural member of the Forward Foundation and, and to see the amount of passion those folks continue to provide. One, it's, it's quite honestly a great opportunity for citizens of River Falls to get involved. I like the idea, and that was mentioned. It's good to see that coming to fruition of engaging many of the past alums. But you really, it, it came out in the strategic plan, again, most recently, were partnerships, and this is probably, to me, a good example of an internal partnership that we could do more with. Alan mentions the innovation that's come out of it. For me, it's been the above and beyond, the emphasis on above and beyond programs, which, which has been great. It's, it's allowed us to get into some new things. It's energized many of the staff who've been involved, and it's energized the, the people on the board. It gives them a whole new level of involvement at the district and really make them feel they're doing something meaningful.
Thank you. Ms. Colpene?
Now, as I understand the question, it was, how do you promote it in the community? And the, the foundation has had all the benefits that everybody's talked about to the district. And beyond that, I think Alan alluded to it a little bit. He called it pilot projects, but I like to call them demonstration projects. It's offered teachers the opportunity to do demonstration projects where they're the, the people who do it first, and they, they show others what can be done. And it takes a lot of courage to do that. But to get more publicity in the community, I would want to challenge our local businesses to help sponsor some of it, because we talk about individuals paying more, but I think the benefits that we can get out of it, if we can create a culture among our local business owners, that it's their responsibility as citizens of this community, that they would contribute also, and they can be a part of it, both from bringing people in, bringing money in, you know, that I think we can do a lot with it.
Thank you. Mr. Miller? What are your views of school vouchers?
Well, you know, I, I've, I feel like we need to, if, if people think there's something wrong with public education, I don't feel that, and I don't know why we would take public funds and put them into private schools. If we feel like there needs to be a fix to the public schools, let's fix them. And I don't think we should be taking taxpayer monies and, and supplementing private schools with vouchers.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter?
You know, the summit or educational forum on this subject last week, you know, did a lot to enlighten me on it, you know, again, using the word pilot or demonstration project, you know, what as I understand, 20, 25 years ago, was a few hundred thousand dollar experiment in the state, has become an almost one billion dollar investment, and all it has done is watered down and compromised our current public education system. And my fear is, quite honestly, you know, what's taken, you know, probably one of the best educational systems from a K-12 standpoint, much less higher ed, in the nation, and now created kind of a two-tier, which basically means we're going to have two average systems. That billion dollars, to me, could do a lot to shore up our one public education system, and it's doing anything but at this point. It's, it's sold as a school choice. I'm not convinced of that from what I've seen.
Thank you. Ms. Colpene?
I'm opposed to using public funds to pay for independent charter schools and for voucher program schools. If, if additional options are needed to educate Wisconsin children, every Wisconsin school district or school board has the ability to establish and operate their own public charter schools, and we're a great example of that. We have three charter schools, our e-school, our Montessori, and our Renaissance Academy. So if there is truly an unmet need, I believe that parents and interested parties should focus their energies on working with their local district and the Department of Public Instruction to develop, authorize, and operate charter schools within the public school framework. And I believe that they should do that for performance, accountability, licensing, staffing, and student outcomes. And I also oppose the two-year statewide voucher program with the, and the current proposal to lift enrollment pro, cap on the program. To date, many of the voucher participants don't leave the public schools in search of better education. They are already enrolled in a private school, and the voucher money was used to pay tuition at the school they previously attended. And the details of the proposed program are still nebulous, but they're not going to help public schools or the education for the children.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan?
Just so there's no doubt about where I stand on this one, I think the expansion of school voucher program in the state is a cancer in public education in the state, and I think we need to be careful of it and watch for it. What originally started as an opportunity for low-income students to escape poor-performing high schools in the southeastern part of the state, has now become a way for people to divert money from public higher educa, our public education in the state to private education. This is not about choice. We already have choice in this state. People have the option here in this community of going to a private school. They have the opportunity of homeschooling their students, and I'm very much in support of those people who decide to do that. I'm not in favor of, of us diverting funds away from our public schools and into those. This state did not become strong, this country did not become strong in the 20th century by diverting money from public schools into private schools. I have nothing against private schools, I have nothing against homeschoolers. I have everything against the expansion of, of school vouchers in this state. They are bad, and don't let anybody tell you differently. There's another agenda behind that. The expansion of, of school vouchers in this state is a bad idea.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Mr. Stifter? What are your views of Common Core?
Oh, that's a great question. Yeah, again, similar to the voucher system, something I'm kind of beginning to learn much more on. You know, I, I think it, it serves its purpose. It has a purpose in the state, but it, but it has the, the opportunity, again, to be misused. You know, it is what it is in a lot of ways. I think working to do what we can to, to use it wisely within the state, to measure ourself against it, and talking to Jennifer Pearson in particular, who is helpful in, in walking me through some of the aspects of it. But it, it's one of those things, I'd seen a, a t-shirt recently, which kind of reminded me of this, that teachers teach and legislators pass laws about teaching, and in some ways, Common Core smacks a little bit of too much of that, in, in, in that, so. But again, it's a framework we have, and I think we do a, a good job of assessing against it, but as I mentioned earlier too, some of my concern is with the amount of assessment we do currently.
Thank you. Ms. Colpene?
I support the Common Core standards. Academic standards are not new in Wisconsin. The Common Core standards for mathematics and English language arts supplement the 21 Wisconsin academic standards that already exist for specific content areas in the state. The Wisconsin standards are rigorous, clear targets for what our students need to know and be able to do at each level. The structure they provide has allowed our teachers and administrators to move beyond discussions about what students should understand, to productively focus on what curriculum. Resources and techniques will best move students from where they are now to where they need to be. And I believe, further believe that all Wisconsin schools that receive public support, so the public, the independent charter, the private schools that accept vouchers, and voucher schools, should be evaluated against how well they meet the same set of academic standards, be they the Common Core or the Wisconsin academic standards. So the education of our children is a state responsibility. So we need to have one assessment or the same expectations for all of our children, no matter where they're educated.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan?
There's been a tremendous amount of confusion over what Common Core is, and it's been used by an awful lot of, of groups, I think it's sad to say, as an excuse to beat up on schools and other kinds of things. We need common educational standards in our community, in our state, and in our nation, and the, the, the lack of consistency in standards nationwide in this country has been appalling. It's important to know that Algebra I at River Falls High School is the same as Algebra I in Chicago schools, the New York schools, in Beijing, and Paris, okay? And that's not been the case. Common school, Common Core standards, the, the background behind them was to bring some common standards across the board. How they get implemented become, has become unfortunately a very hot political issue, a very hot political issue. I think we need common standards and expectations so our students can be successful for the rest of their life. I also support an important role for teachers to be active participants in setting and adjusting those standards going forward, as well as parents and school board members. But teachers are the ones that need, that are going to be implementing them. They're most experienced in assessing. In fact, they are the kings of assessment. They do assessment every day. They need to be at the table helping to set those Common Core standards.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
I too think there need to be standards. If a, if a fourth grader from Wisconsin moves to Missouri, I do think there needs to be a baseline that we know that that child will be at least at a baseline. The Common Core sets kind of a big picture. It does not dictate to us as a local district how we implement. One of the concerns I have is some of the, we talked about assessments a little bit. Our teachers are sometimes being overrun with data and data analysis. We're losing focus sometimes of what the role of a teacher is, and that's getting in front of the kids on a daily basis, and sometimes I think we lose focus of that with all the, the things that go along with implementing the Common Core. I agree, we need to include the teachers in the process. I do think we need to implement it carefully, and I do think we need to make sure we're not over, overrunning our, our teachers with data analysis.
Thank you. All right. Our last question of the evening starts with Ms. Colpene. With the annual meeting saying no to selling the older part of the academy building, what would you suggest the board do to not make this building a financial drain to the district?
Since both the, the annual meeting said that we couldn't sell the building, or the vote of the annual meeting said that, and there were, the questions on the last two referenda also indicated that we couldn't tear down the building, I think what the district needs to do is convene, well, first, probably a survey of, of what do people really want, to try and get at that question, because we've been told no three different times. And, and so I'm not sure we really understand what our voters want us to do, so I think we need to figure out what they are, both by a, first by a survey, and then, as I mentioned before, get together a broad-based team, group of people to actually look at what, what do people want us to do with, with that building? And because we don't need it to become a drain on the district, and we don't need to be paying for space that we don't need. But, so I, that would be my, my answer, that first we have to figure out what people want us to do with it.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan?
That building is already a financial drain on the district. It has been for a long, long time. Our, our inability to divest ourselves of the current situation has been a challenge. One of the challenges is, and this is where I would, I would take just a different tact than what Barb just said, there is not a consensus in this community on what to do with that building, and we will never get to the point, we will, if we're going to wait till we have a consensus on what to do with that building, we will never do anything with that building. We have to find a solution that most of the community agrees with, and we've tried several, and they have been very narrowly defeated by the people who show up and vote. In the, in the fall, at the open electors meeting, it was simply that they didn't want us to sell it to a developer. We didn't even have a developer who was giving us an offer. We just wanted to know if we could talk to a developer. So we're not going to do that right now. We were, we were told they didn't want to torn down and do some other things. There may be some other solutions. We're back to the drawing board with that. We want to minimize the, the financial drain that that building has, minimize where, what our options are right now, and then move ahead. As Barb suggests, we need to have an engaged process here, figure out where we go next.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes. One of my roles on the school board was to be the co-chair of the academy building committee with Elaine Baumann, who's here tonight. We thought we were on the way to a solution, something that would appease both keeping education there and selling off the older parts of the building. The public said no to that, so I'm not sure what the next answer is. I, I personally think, from a historical standpoint, I'm not sure the building is his, is it meaningful, as meaningful to people as the site itself. I think the site having education from the 1850s is really what's really important. Whatever the solution is, I think it would be important for us to try to keep education on that site as long as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Stifter?
You know, the, the committee Mike spoke of, I was on that and spent the better part of two years of my life working on that issue, and the, both sides of the referendum on that issue, losing one narrowly and, and parts of another one on that. So it is something I'm mindful of. I tend to agree there's not a consensus. I think it's a 50% plus one, but I don't know what that plus one falls on. I do think there's a short-term reality that the building is going to be a part of our future for a while still. It is going to be a drain. I think we're going to, again, work hard to manage it. I do think Barb is right, though, trying to gain some level of consensus of how strategically we can use probably the, the 27 addition to, again, to the benefit of the Montessori, but I do think the intermediate, long-term, there's something better. I also agree with Mike. I think it's the site in particular that's most important to most. Again, having seen this and been involved in a number of conversations on it versus the building itself, but it, it is a difficult one. It's a complex one, and there are a lot of strong feelings on it on all aspects, from both the taxpayer to the historic preservation aspects to other.
Thank you. Each candidate will now be given one minute for a closing statement, and we'll be moving from my right to, to the left, so Mr. Stifter, if you want to start with your closing statement, you have one minute.
Well, I have a slightly different closing statement than I came in with, largely because we covered a lot of these issues. But again, I want to thank A U W and the River Falls Optimists Club for tonight's opportunity. As I had spoken to a number of folks tonight in preparation, I think we have five really good candidates, four, four here tonight, and then I have no doubt Karen Swenson takes the, the role and responsibility very seriously also. You heard, I think, a lot of similar thoughts and, and responses. I've been very impressed, I'm not running out of coincidence, I've been very impressed with not only the way the district runs, but the teachers, the staff, the parents, the children are all assets. They are our strength. There's no doubt about that to me. My interest really has only grown throughout this last several months, as I've looked at, as I've talked to a number of people in a broad way, and I look forward to serving the community as a school board member going forth, and it's why I would appreciate everyone's vote on, on Tuesday, April 7.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thanks. Let me start by saying I'm very, very proud when I go to meetings, school board meetings across the state, to say that I'm from River Falls. We have a lot of really, really good things happening here. We're well thought of in the community, in the education community in our state. We have great strengths. We have a great staff, from the bus drivers that drive our kids to school, to the teachers, to the aides, to the central office staff. We have a great staff that care about kids individually. We have a great parent group. We have very involved parents. We have great comm, um, school-based programs or the parent groups at each of the schools. You go over to Rocky Branch and watch them, the dads work outside on the playground every year. We have a great character ed program that I think is bringing us lots of, a lot of awards, and something we should be very proud of. We're very financially secure. Our district has totally funded our unfunded liabilities. You're going to hear a lot about that in the future with other districts, so I'm proud to be a school board member. I also would appreciate a support on Tuesday.
Thank you. Mr. Tuckton-Hagan?
Thanks, Rita, and thanks again to both groups for hosting us here tonight, and for those of you who are here tonight asking these great questions. There are a couple things generally, as, as they've mentioned, I'm really honored, feel honored to be on the board. I've been on the board since 2008. This is hard work, and we have to make hard choices, and for anybody who thinks that this is about showing up for a couple hours once a month for board meetings, there's a lot more to this, and I'm not complaining, because I do this. And it's a calling, and it's important work that we do when it comes to the education of our kids. We don't all agree, we can't all agree, but we want to do our best to find out and do what's best for the students in our, in our district, and for the voters in our district, and make sure that the taxpayers are getting what they are. they are paying for, what every generation before them has paid for. Strong education system here, and to make it strong here in Wisconsin. Again, I want to remain committed to keeping this district fiscally sound, which keeps our bond rating low, which saves us money, and helps us in our day-to-day work, and it helps us against emergencies. I want to continue to work, support teachers, the work that they do, which is more than just compensation, and work to resolve the academy building and the other issues going forward, and working on our strategic plan. Thanks for being here tonight. And again, I, I hope you will all show up next Tuesday to vote, not just, I'm not asking for my vote. A strong voter turnout in this district sends a message to the board. People are paying attention, and they care.
Thank you. Ms. Colpin?
I'll, you know, say again, thanks to AAUW, the Optimists Club, and this is a great turnout, more than we normally have at these forums. But it's been informative, and to all the candidates for coming, because it makes it an informative evening. And I'd like to repeat what I said when I started tonight. I am an optimist, because I truly believe in the abilities of our children and what they can accomplish. And I also believe that the opportunity for each child to achieve comes only from the strong, strong foundation provided by our public education system here in River Falls. I personally have over 30 years of experience as an advocate for issues affecting academic achievement. I've shown through my work in the community, and for 15 years on the school board, that I'm ethical, principled leader, and I actively and honestly will listen to everybody, and that I will be fair. I'd like, I, I think I characterize it by saying, I mean, I'm interested in solving problems, not taking sides. And I'll say, you know, for 15 years, you've placed your trust in me and elected me to lead and be on the team that leads the district. I promise, if I'm re-elected, that I'll continue to spend whatever time is necessary to make the schools better for all of us.
Thank you. This concludes the River Falls School District Board Candidate Forum. The spring election is Tuesday, April 7, and the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. When registering at the polls on Election Day, you must provide proof of residency. This forum is being broadcast live on Channel 16 and livestreamed on the River Falls City website, www.rfcity.org/chanell16live. The program will be shown until the election on Channel 16 as is, with no editing due to the time constraints. For an updated TV schedule, go to www.rfcity.org/tv-schedules. The Candidate Forum will be available on the city's YouTube channel, www.youtube.com/cityofriverfalls. On behalf of AAUW River Falls, the River Falls Optimists Club, and myself, I thank the candidates and the audience members for participating in this forum. Our democracy, our democracy is founded on citizen participation. Please vote on April 7. Thank you.